Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Pinetop Lakeside Town Council to order. We do have a quorum. Before we start, I'd just remind you to silence your cellphones, please. I would ask you to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor Diane?
Would you pray with me, please? God, also known as the Great Spirit and the Creator of all things, we come to this public meeting tonight with grateful hearts full of thanksgiving. We give you thanks for Councilmember Watson and his years of service to the citizens of Lakeside and Pinetop. Be with him as he moves on to other endeavors. We also give you thanksgiving for the council members who will remain for our mayor-elect and the council members-elect who will be taking their oath of office tonight. God, as the year progresses, may they remember the words to which they will swear to tonight. Would you also bless them, increase their time, give them an abundance of energy, and grant them the needed wisdom and discernment to make decisions that are in the best interest of their constituents and the future of Pinetop and Lakeside? We ask that you would be with every school employee within our school district and that you would protect our first responders. As this meeting continues, may each person and his or her opinion be heard and respected. Here are our prayer. May it be so. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Pastor Diane. We always appreciate you being here. Item B on the agenda is Call to the Public. This is a business meeting of the town council. The town values and welcomes public input. Please address the council as a whole and not individual council members. Do not address staff or members of the audience. Council action on items brought up in Call to the Public is limited by the open meeting law. The council may direct staff to study the matter and reschedule for further consideration at a later date. Items on the agenda are not heard during Call to the Public, and individuals are limited to three minutes. I have a request from Tony Alba to address us tonight.
Good evening, Mayor Irwin, Vice Mayor Smith, members of the council. I just wanted to take a quick minute to remind you all and our public that are watching online, as well as those in attendance. Tomorrow evening is the Pinetop Lakeside Christmas Fair at Jack Barker Community Park. That will include the annual mayor's tree lighting, which is fabulous. I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go by the park. It looks wonderful. Want to thank our Public Works Department and Annie DeRozier, who were out there braving the cold, putting up all the decorations. So our event tomorrow begins at 5:30. We'll go to 8 o'clock. We will have food trucks. We'll have live entertainment from the Blue Ridge High School Women's Choir. We've got a hot air balloon coming again this year, some craft events. Santa Claus will be arriving at about 6:15 for pictures. Very fun and festive evening, so we're looking forward to that. Also, next Saturday, the 10th of December, we've got our annual Nights of Lights. Night of Lights, actually. It will be one night at two locations, so we'll have coffee vendors and we'll have canned music, holiday music, both at Jack Barker Memorial Park as well as Woodland Lake Park, where we've got our candy cane lane that has been set up. We had trees and gingerbread houses that were adopted by local businesses, local families, and decorated. So both of those events are going on. Again, the Christmas Fair and tree lighting tomorrow evening, 5:30 at Jack Barker Memorial Park. And then next week, at Jack Barker and at Woodland Lake Park, will be Night of Lights. And it's free. That's the best part. Thank you.
What time is the Night of Lights?
I'm sorry. Night of Lights will be from 5 to 7 at both locations.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony.
You bet.
And I would just like to echo your thanks to Public Works and Annie. Everything looks great. The new gingerbread houses and trees at Woodland Lake Park are an incredible addition to our decorating. Is there anybody else that would like to address the council tonight and call to the public? Okay, then we'll move on to item C, which is our consent agenda. All items listed are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests then an item be removed for discussion. Council members, however, may ask questions without removal of the item from the consent agenda, and items removed are considered in our normal sequence. As you can see, we have two items on the consent agenda tonight. Vice Mayor?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D is Business Before the Council. Public comment will be taken at the beginning of each agenda item after the subject has been announced by the mayor and explained by staff. Any citizen who wishes may speak one time for five minutes on each agenda item either before or after council discussion. Questions from council members, however, may be directed to staff or members of the public through the mayor at any time. Item D1 tonight is Consider Approval of Resolution Number 22-1645, Declaring and Adopting the Results of the General Election Held on November 8, 2022. Kristi?
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. As required by Arizona Revice Statute 16-642, the attached resolution that is found on item D1 and official election report from Navajo County Election Director reflects the official results from the town's general election held on November 8, 2022. There were 2,791 total registered voters and 2,031 total number of ballots cast, which is a voter turnout of 72.77 percent. Pretty good numbers for us. Below is a summary of the election results. Proposition 430, 1,038 yes votes, 813 no votes. So Proposition 430 passed. Councilmember for the two-year seat Lynn Krigbaum received 1,131 votes. Writing candidate Derek Cavee received 94 votes, and there were 34 invalid write-in votes. So tonight, we have for consideration Approval of Resolution Number 22-1645, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 8 of 2022.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you for all your work on this. I know it's always a challenge getting it right. Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
No.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion, then. Counselor... Oh, Counselor Watson?
My last official action. I would move to adopt Resolution Number 22-1645, declaring and adopting the results of the general election held on November 8, 2022.
I second that.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution Number 22-1645. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D2 is Recognition of Councilmember Watson for his service on the town council since January of 2021. This is rather bittersweet for all of us. I, for one, have really enjoyed working with Paul in this capacity. We've known one another for 35 years, roughly.
Long time.
Long time. Maybe not quite that.
We were both just kids, right?
We were 12, I think. Anyway, so I've appreciated getting to know Paul better on this level. I appreciate his history in the community and his expertise and kind of guiding us in a lot of areas. So any other council members have a comment tonight? Counselor Krigbaum?
I'd like to thank him for his excellent questions.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I've known Paul a long time. I was really happy to see him on council. He's been one of the bright bulbs in our council here, and he illuminated just a lot of issues that we were really happy to hear about with his vast experience and knowledge of all the things that have gone on over the years in our council and in our town. So we'll miss him a lot.
Thank you.
Okay. I know we will see you, though. And on behalf of the town, I would like to present you with a clock for your desk or wherever you'd like to keep it. So anyway. All right, we'll see you, I'm sure. Here's the box, if you'd like that as well.
So a few parting comments, if I may?
Please.
I'll do it down here, since this is where I log in. First, to the staff and Keith. Truly been an honor to work with you and to see the dedication that each of you has to this community. As a council member, you really are in need of information from staff in order to make the best decisions. So I've always been grateful for staff's willingness to provide us all the information so that we can make those decisions in a educated fashion. To the council, as you know, it's, for the most part, a very thankless job. So I personally want to thank each one of you for your service to this community. I know that each and every one of you are doing what you believe is right for the community. There are now... There are no self-interests involved in the decision-making of that body. And so it has been my honor and privilege to work with each of you. And I guess my last little soapbox would be this. It seems in this community that it has become somewhat of an easy process for referendums. And while that is a very legal and legitimate process in our political system, it is not without cost of time, money, and effort. And, you know, when you live in a representative form of government, we elect each of you to spend the time, dedication, to become knowledgeable about the issues before you make decisions. And so I guess my comment to staff, council, and to the community would be, I would hope that we would find better mechanisms and processes for making decisions rather than having those decisions referred to on a ballot. It is very difficult for the average community member to be able to vote on an issue that they've only been able to see limited information on, whereas you, as council members, spend months, sometimes even years, studying these issues before you make decisions. And so then to have that referred to the ballot becomes a very difficult and challenging process. Again, not that that's not a legitimate and legal process. It's just one that I personally would hope in the future we would find ways to avoid in any way possible. And with that, I will just say that, you know, I love this community. Been here for 36-plus years, I think now. And this is home, so thank you for the opportunity to serve with you. Thank the community members for all that they do, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you for your words of wisdom, Paul. Okay, we'll continue moving along then. Item D3 is Recognition of Planning and Zoning Commissioner James Brimhall for her service as a commissioner from October 21 of 2021 to present in notification of his resignation of his commission seat effective December 1, 2022. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. James has been serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission since October 21, 2021. And I can personally say that I've noticed that every time James considers an item, that he does it with his whole heart. And so I feel like we'll definitely miss him on planning and zoning, but I think that he's going to be able to grow more on the council, so would you come on up for a minute so I can give you this?
Thank you.
You're welcome, James.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Item D4, I'm going to introduce Judge Bob Higgins to come on up, and I will ask him to swear in myself and councilmembers Buse, Heisler, Brimhall, and Krigbaum.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and it's my privilege to swear you all in tonight. I'd like to echo what Paul said. Thank you all for serving. It's, as he said, a thankless job off, and then I know you put a lot of work into it. So thank you all for what you do for our town. I've only lived here 28 years, but I love it as well, so. All right, Mayor Irwin, if you'd come down? And if you'd repeat after me, maybe we should move back a little. I, Stephanie Irwin.
I, Stephanie Irwin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of mayor.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of mayor.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you. And Sterling Buse? So you have to raise your right hand. There we go. All right. I, Sterling Buse.
I, Sterling Buse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully and...
Impartially.
Impartially discharge the duties of council member.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, congratulations. Tabor Heisler? All right, if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Tabor Heisler.
I, Tabor Heisler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the laws of state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And James Brimhall? I, James Brimhall.
I, James Brimhall.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Does Paul get to keep that, or? All right, Lynn Krigbaum? All right, if you'd repeat after me. I, Lynn Krigbaum.
I, Lynn Krigbaum.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Arizona.
And the laws and constitution of the state of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of council member.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Bob.
All right.
If you can hang out for a minute, we'll have a new Vice Mayor.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, item D5 is election of a vice mayor to serve a term of two years, 2022 through 2024. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, for the public and for the council, I'd just like you to understand that the election of the vice mayor is a really big deal because it's done by your peers. And when they elect that person to be the vice mayor, it means a lot to that person and to the council. As a matter of fact, when Stephanie first, or excuse me, Mayor Irwin first was elected mayor, it was by the council. It wasn't by the public. So that changed over the years, but now the mayor is elected by the public, but the vice mayor is still elected by the council. So in saying that, I would like to make a motion that Sterling Buse is nominated as our next vice mayor.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that Sterling Buse serve as vice mayor for 2022 through 2024. Is there any further discussion?
Move that nominations be closed?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that nominations be closed. Further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Now we have a motion to select Sterling as our vice mayor. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you for your willingness to serve in that position, newly elected vice mayor. And before we allow Judge Higgins to swear him, I would like to thank Counselor Smith for his years of service as vice mayor. He has been my go-to person when I'm unable to attend functions. He's always been available for me, and I've certainly appreciated that. And I know he's not going anywhere. We will continue working together as a council member. He's got a lot of things going on, too, with the Arizona Alpine Trail and construction of a new home, and I know that...
My plate is full.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for your years of service. So Judge Higgins?
Yep.
Good job.
We've done this before. All right. I, Sterling Buse.
I, Sterling Buse.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defending... And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of vice mayor.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of vice mayor.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
For the town of Pinetop Lakeside.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it, Bob.
Thanks for having me, and again, thank you all for your service.
Certainly. Merry Christmas.
Same to you. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move then on to item D7, which is the selection of council committee assignments. So I'm going to just kind of go through these from the top, and if somebody has a desire to make a change or act on these differently, some of them are kind of de facto, excuse me, that as mayor I do serve on, and the vice mayor is my alternate. So first one is the Public Safety PSPRS Local Board, and I am the voting member on that one. The Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. Excuse me, I am also the first person on that, and I would...
I think the vice mayor should be the second person on that.
Okay. Okay. So we'll change that. Moving then to the Senior Center, which I believe we need to retitle that, the Community Center, if you would it mind, please? Are you still willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes, I'll stay there.
Okay. Is there somebody that would like to serve as the alternate to that one? So we'll leave the alternate position open on that one. You can call on any of us, really, if you need. Okay, the Audit Committee meets very infrequently. Do you want to continue on that one?
Somebody else can take that up if they'd like to.
Okay. Counselor Brimhall?
Yeah, this, not knowing much about it, I'm willing to take that on for you. Or take it over.
Thank you. Moving then to the Humane Society. They meet once a month on a Wednesday, first Wednesday, oh, excuse me, the third Wednesday of the month. Counselor Heisler, are you willing to continue in that capacity?
Yes, I'm happy to continue that assignment.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wants to take the second on that one? Okay. Little Colorado RCND Counselor Snitzer, are you willing to continue? Thank you. And Trax Counselor Snitzer, and Counselor Krigbaum? On Trax?
Yes, that's fine. And I can also be with...
Yes, that's fine. And I can also be with Counselor Snitzer on the Little Colorado RCND if he needs me.
Thank you.
If he can't go, I could go sometime.
Thank you. Then moving on to Natural Resources Working Group, we've got Counselors Kriegerbaum and Heisler. Is that okay to continue on that one? Okay. Nature Center, Counselor Snitzer? You're on that board, so you go anyway, right?
I'm the Nature Center, yes.
Uh huh. That's okay.
Yep.
All right, the Historical Society. Counselor Buse, Vice Mayor Buse, would you like to give that one up, or?
If someone has an interest, I can, but I'm fine staying on it as well.
Does anybody else have a real interest in that one? Okay, we'll leave that one there. The School Board?
I'd actually like to stay on that one. I mean, if someone else wants to go second, though, that'd be fine.
Okay, Counselor Brimhall, I would ask if you would take second on that one, please, since you have children in the school. I think that would be great for you.
In fact, Mayor, if you want, we could put James as first and me a second, too, whatever way works is fine. I'm fine staying in the first as well.
Okay. Do you want to be primary on that one, or secondary?
I'm not sure responsibilities for what that all entails, but I would be involved in the school. I'd like to be number one, if that's fine.
Okay, we'll put you as primary.
Okay.
And Counselor Buse, Vice Mayor Buse, of course, you both can attend those meetings. There's no, we can all attend them. Okay, then NACOG. I would be the first, and Vice Mayor Buse would be the second. Transit Advisory, Counselor Smith, you have been so instrumental on that one. Are you willing to continue with that one?
Yes, I'll continue with that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that very much. Is there somebody that would take the second on that one? Counselor Brimhall, are you interested at all in that? That's the bus line. We work with the City of Sholo and other partners.
Not necessarily. I'm not interested in that one.
Okay, you can leave me on as alternate then. Moving on then to For Frye, Counselors Kriegerbaum and Heisler? Is that okay? All right, Forest Health, the same. Okay. Save Our Park, Counselors Kriegerbaum and Smith?
Yeah, I'm number two, not number three.
Okay, we'll get that corrected. Thank you. And then, of course, the Apache Navajo County Mayors and Council Members Association. We are all members of that one. So are there any that we've missed, that I overlooked? Counselor, Vice Mayor Buse?
I was just gonna say, Mayor, I could take the second on the Transit Advisory if you'd like to.
That would be great. Jerry is very good about going to that one, though, so I'm sure, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, did we miss any, or anybody else want to change things up a little bit? Okay. Kristi, you got all of that? And we need to have a vote? So, okay. All right, thank you everybody for serving on those. If you have any questions on when those committees meet, you can ask Kristi, and I think she's got that. Okay. Oh, thank you. Item D eight, then, moving along, is Discussion and Legal Action for Resolution Number 22-1640 and Ordinance Number 22-453, Updating Town Code Titles 5.04.010, 16.16.020, and 16.24.140 to eliminate Pinetop Fire District and the Lakeside Fire District and replace with Fire District. Jeremiah?
Good evening again, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. This is really just a code cleanup item. Our code still identifies Lakeside Fire District as being one of the fire districts. It hasn't been in existence since 2014, when it merged with Timber Mesa. So what we're doing here is just eliminating all references to both of the fire districts. So if they choose in the future to merge or change their names, then we won't have to go back or have basically a code that references a district that's no longer in existence.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? I appreciate you catching this and helping us get our codes more accurate. No questions from council? Then I entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-1640 and Ordinance Number 22-453, thereby amending the following titles, 5.04.010, 16.16.020, and 16.24.140 of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Town Code, and change the definition of Fire District to quote "the district having authority for fire protection" and eliminating references to the Pinetop Fire District and the Lakeside Fire District, and replacing them with references instead to the Fire District.
Second.
Thank you. We have a, it's been moved and seconded to adopt these Resolution and Ordinance. All those in favor, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry. All those in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Jeremiah. Moving on again to item D nine, which is Discussion and Legal Action Regarding Resolution Number 22-1641 and Ordinance Number 22-454, Amending Title 16, Chapter 16.24.140, Water System.
Right, you may have noticed, Mayor and Council, that this item actually touches on the same exact section of code as the last item, but this is a different subject. So this subject has to deal with the water specifically within a subdivision. This is the subdivision title. Usually, when you see a subdivision come in, for instance, a new subdivision come in, it would have this detail as far as all of the requirements and where they would be constructed. And so that's how we have authority to dictate where it's in a subdivision. However, the code had some reference to it being outside of a subdivision, so this is another code cleanup item to just basically tie that down, that this is, that we're stating, yes, is a subdivision section that pertains only to subdivisions, and we're not the water providers, and we don't really have authority outside of that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Jeremiah? I would entertain a motion then.
I move to adopt Resolution 22-1641 and Ordinance Number 22-454, thereby amending Title 16, Subdivisions, Chapter 16.24.140, Design Standards of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Town Code, and clarifying the intent of the design standards to be within a subdivision.
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. Item D ten, Discussion and Legal Action for Resolution Number 22-1646 and Ordinance Number 22-455, Amending Town Code Title 17.12.020 to add the definition of an aggrieved person to the definitions. Jeremiah?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Vice Mayor Buse, newly elected, appointed Vice Mayor Buse and Council, and members of the public that are interested in this item. So this item was initially brought before planning and zoning on August 25th, and it was tabled, but it was brought back November 10th, last month, and it was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on a four-to-one vote. The basis of this definition comes from state statute. And I'm gonna read those statutes. I'm gonna touch on them briefly here. For instance, a person aggrieved is defined in the Board of Adjustment in the Cities and Towns Section of the Arizona revised statutes, Title IX, 9-46206K, to be precise. A person aggrieved by the decision of a legislative body or board or a taxpayer who owns or leases the adjacent property or property within 300 feet from the boundary of the immediately adjacent property and officer or department of the municipality affected by a decision of the legislative body or board at any time within 30 days after the board or the legislative body of the board decision was appealed pursuant to subsection J of the section has rendered this decision, may file a complaint for special action in Superior Court to review legislative body of the board decision. Now, this ties it specifically to if it went on an appeal from the Board of Adjustment to the Superior Court. But I found that there's another reference where this is talking about extraterritorial jurisdiction that states that it would be our responsibility and the counties, if we did practice extraterritorial jurisdiction, to define what an aggrieved party status is for administrative and judicial appeal development decisions. And that's in 946.11. There's another that ties it to 300 feet in the public hearing required, in the definitions of public hearing required in 9-462.04. It says that a party aggrieved means any property owner within the notification area prescribed by subsection A, paragraph three of the section. If you look to that section, paragraph A, and section A and paragraph three, rather, it says that in proceedings that are not initiated by a property owner involving rezoning of land that may change zoning classification, notice by first-class mail shall be sent to each real property owner and should be on the last assessment of the property, of the area to be rezoned, all property owners, and should shown on the last assessment of the property within 300 feet of the property to be rezoned. So you see over and over and over that this 300 feet that I have selected as a definition is not arbitrary. It's already outlined in statute, various statutes within Title IX. And so what we're asking here is to define basically who has the ability to appeal to the Board of Adjustment and define who is an aggrieved party, or a person, rather. So that's what we're looking at. And there was a lot of excitement at the last Planning and Zoning Commission. I don't know if you may or may not have watched it. But I just want to say that we're not muzzling anybody. Anybody, members of the public, still have the opportunity to come forward and express their concerns for anything that comes before planning and zoning or the Town Council or the Board of Adjustment, for that matter. So that's not the intent. The intent is to identify who is an aggrieved party, who has standing. That's what we're aiming at here.
Thank you for your explanation. Questions, comments for Jeremiah? Counselor Snitzer?
I have, I'll say, I don't even know whether this is a concern or a comment, but this does a good job of saying that, you know, you have to be an aggrieved party within 300 feet in order to appeal a decision. You can't just be someone who disagrees with the decision. You haven't really said the essence of an aggrieved.
Counselor Snitzer, can you pull your mic down, please?
Sorry. The essence of an aggrieved person, I understand, is that you can demonstrate that the decision of the board that you're appealing has caused you a financial loss that you can demonstrate or has deprived you of a freedom that you would otherwise have. It can't just be, oh, I'm aggrieved by that decision. You have to be able to demonstrate an injury of one of two specific types. And I don't know that we have to put that in our code, but somehow you have to get across the point that you don't self-identify as an aggrieved party. You have to demonstrate an injury that was caused by the decision of the group, and that also gives you grounds for appealing.
Right, so I think what you're touching on is, like, if there was a special harm, they would have to show that. So that is, that is one of the things.
Yeah, for example, somebody said, well, you know, they've done this, and it's gonna destroy my property values. You can't say that. You have to, here's testimony of an expert in property appraisal who says that your property, you know, you can't just, you can't self-describe yourself as aggrieved. You've got to demonstrate a financial loss or the loss of a freedom.
Right, and this actually works both ways in the instance, say, that planning and zoning denied a conditional use permit. Obviously, the person that is the landowner is within 300 feet, so they'd be able to appeal that decision to the Board of Adjustment. And then anybody within 300 feet would be able to show that they have maybe an injury or a special harm or some kind of undue financial loss.
Yeah, but it's gotta be, they actually have to have one of those two very specific losses. Because it's very easy for people to say, well, I'm an aggrieved party, meaning I disagree with what went on.
Right.
But you've got to demonstrate a financial injury or the loss of a freedom.
So Jeremiah?
But that's in the law. That's not something we have to put in our code. But when we're applying our code, it's important for us to remember that there's a definite, if you Google aggrieved party, that's exactly what you'll see, that definition.
Right, and I brought that forward to the Planning and Zoning Commission from the last, what was mentioned by you at the last time we had a Board of Adjustment, and how there basically needs to be that demonstration of an injury and a remedy. And so we touched on that, and we looked, but basically, this is primarily rooted in state statute, recognizing that state statute is effective whether we adopt it or not. But this will help us basically tie that down in our code to define who is an aggrieved person.
Yeah, at least you know who can say they're an aggrieved party, but they still have to demonstrate they're actually aggrieved.
Right.
So by putting this into our code, it, in my mind, we've been trying really hard over the years to make our code more user-friendly, easier to follow. All the answers are there. So in my mind, this kind of helps accomplish that even more so. Since it wasn't, has not been in our code, though, it all falls back to state statute, correct? If somebody were to go to Superior Court on this, and they were, they have to be an aggrieved party in order to do this.
Right, they would have to show the injury or financial loss and demonstrate that they were within 300 feet. So we're not doing anything terribly different from state statute. We're just doing it at the local level.
Right, so it's making it easier for people to be able to read the code and find out. Okay, any other questions? Counselor Kriegerbaum?
I would, excuse me, I would like to just say that this, we aren't putting anything in our code that stops anybody from talking about things. We always want people's opinions. That doesn't mean that whether they're aggrieved or not, that's the legal part. But just voicing your opinion is very important, and I think that we all need to respect that. And I want to especially say what a good job the Chairman Salzkopf did at that planning and zoning meeting. I felt that he was very respectful of all of the opinions, and there were a lot. And I think we really appreciate that. And we're so glad when people come to the meetings and give us their opinions. How would we know if they don't say something? It doesn't have to be that you're gonna take something to court, but that's the part that has to be in our code, and that's the important thing. I just wanted to kind of do this as an aside, that I thought they did a good job at the meeting.
Yes, thank you, Counselor Kriegerbaum. Counselor Smith?
Yeah, I would echo Counselor Kriegerbaum there. This is a forum where people can come and talk. I would also like to have you look at your definition in 1712-20, oh, 20. I think there's a couple of, we want to get this right, and I think there's a couple of errors in here. It starts out with aggrieved by a decision of the Community Development Director. I think that should also go down in line six. By a decision of the, it starts with legislative body or Planning and Zoning Commission. It left out Community Development Director, and I think you probably want that in there.
Yes, we do.
Okay, and the other one is in the middle of line five, no, line four. And this is a really important one. It says property and officer. That is not correct. It should be A-N-D, and. And if you look at the language, that's the way it is in the farther.
In my CDR, I think you might be reading out of there. We did have Town Attorney, Mr. Bill Sims, review this, and there is some changes in the definitions. If you look at the sheet, and it clarifies, like you pointed out, aggrieved person, a person aggrieved by a decision of the Community Development Director. If somebody disagrees with the decision I made, that's the first part that was put in there. The Legislative Body or Planning and Zoning Commission owns or leases the affected property, the adjacent property, or property within 300 feet from the boundary of the affected property and officer or department of the municipality affected by a decision of the legislative body or Planning and Zoning Commission, provided that for appeals to the Navajo County Superior Court, the definition of aggrieved party shall be governed by ARIS 9-46206, as may be amended. So it's slightly different, but it does include the first part, at least, where you had mentioned if they were aggrieved by a decision that I had made.
Right.
So does that explanation, does that make sense now?
I think so.
Okay.
But the and, the and is, I think it should be the, and the officer, and officer or department, not and officer. It's, you're including that body.
No, I think it needs to be and.
A-N-D.
No.
I think it's correct as is also, just an A-N.
I think it's correct, as is also just an "A-N" in this case.
Right. This basically says that, say, for instance, Planning and Zoning Commission made a decision that I didn't agree with, that I could actually appeal that to the Board of Adjustment as well.
Right. So I believe it is correct as stated. Yeah.
I think in some of the language that you had in the... I think it was the Planning and Zoning documentation. It did have "and", A-N-D, in it.
What's that?
You might check that back.
Yeah, because that other one, like you pointed out, that one was an error in the... In my CDR, that wasn't brought back from the amended definition after we sent it to legal.
Okay. Any other questions from the Counsel? We do have a member of the public that would like to address this. If you would come up, Jim Beck. And I would ask you to clearly state your name and your physical address for the record so that members of the public know who and where you are.
Good evening. I'm Jim Beck. Live on 3048 South Pinetop Lane, Mountain Lane in Pinetop. We've just heard, witnessed, our re-elected mayor and Counsel members place their hand on the Bible and swear their alliance to the U.S. Constitution. But will our local representatives honor their solemn pledge? Or was this simply an exercise of required formality? After all, the first few words of the preamble of the Constitution begins with "we, the people". It's abundantly clear that our founders set up a new and unique form of government intended to be governed by the people. The seven we see sitting before us are our duly-elected local representatives. But do they believe in representative government? You could have fooled me. Do they actually serve to represent those who elected them? Or do they represent the will of the town manager, the economic developer director, and the developers? For those who have been paying attention, the latter is obvious. Even when the Counsel hears from a majority of citizens objecting to any particular resolution, one after another, we've repeatedly seen our voices go in one of their ears and out the other. That's just like this last meeting on this topic. Every single person that voiced their opinion was against this aggrieved person. Did it do any good? We might as well have kept silent for all the good it has done. Our First Amendment guarantees our freedom of speech, but the 300-foot rule muzzles us, which flies in the face of the Constitution they just swore to uphold. It also grants us the right to peacefully assemble. Since our rights are being abridged, maybe it's time for the people to begin to picket Town Hall and wake up some more residents and visitors. The final sentence of the First Amendment provides for the people to petition the government for regressive grievances, which are why we are here. We strongly object to the new aggrieved person word definition. This Counsel has heard objection after objection from the public. We've filed referendum after referendum, yet they insist on ignoring those objections. The majority of the public is not happy with your growth and development plan. You're failing them in that respect, and they are steadily discovering how you intend to ruin our small town and its natural beauty. Watch out, Counsel, our numbers are growing daily. From what I understand, the town does not have to comply with the aggrieved person statute and could set any distance they choose, instead of limiting it to 300 feet. As far as I could tell, the word "aggrieved" has never been a problem, and the wording should simply remain as it is. The recent actions taken by the town are not winning you any fans, but only serves to isolate and anger the public more. As it stands, what we are witnessing in Pinetop Lakeside is far from the representative government intended for "we, the people". I fully expect the Counsel to unanimously pass tonight's final agenda item, regardless of public objection. And once again, we will have already forgotten the solemn oath they swore to obey. The people need to regain local power by taking the next step to get rid of an unresponsive, unrepresentative local government. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. I would like to reiterate what Counsel Craigbaum said. This is not intended whatsoever to restrict anybody's free speech. We are here to listen, and just because we listen and don't agree with you doesn't mean we are not listening. And by our code being silent on this, we fall back on state statute, which is basically the same definition we are suggesting putting in our codes. So is there further discussion from the Counsel?
Just...
Counsel Snitzer?
One comment, just because I did a lot of research on this, where this legal principle of agreement came from. The... It's ancient in law. And it actually started in British Kamala and came to America. And the concept was, you can have a legislative body, and, you know, let's just say, you know, Planning and Zoning approves a garage on the other side of town, and somebody decides, I'm gonna throw a shoe in the woodwork. You know, I'm gonna stop this, because I just don't like Planning and Zoning. And I'll file a lawsuit. I'll stop it. And it was to protect everybody else that this concept of being aggrieved. It said, you can't merely disagree with the decision. Anybody can disagree with any decision. But in order to have, and a very important principle, in order to have legal standing to file an appeal, then you have to have some effect on you from that decision. You can't just say, I don't like what so-and-so did, and I've got a lot of money, so I'm gonna start a lawsuit. You have to have legal standing, and it's a very important part of our law. And it says, if you do have standing, you have enormous power. If you have legal standing, you've got enormous power to challenge a regulatory body. But if you have no legal standing, you're just, you know, making waves for the personal interest of it or something. So it's not much of a hurdle to say if you want... You can say anything you want, and you should. And as I say, whether you have a vote or not, you always have a voice. But it's an important legal principle that if you wish to file a legal appeal, you must have some skin in the game. That decision injured you in some way, and you want to stop the injury to you. So it's not something that's... Even in the least bit arbitrary, it's very, very fundamental to our legal system.
Thank you, Counsel Snitzer. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to echo what was been said, too, and I think the people in this room know that I'm certainly always willing to listen, as is this body. And we're not muzzling anybody. You have the right to voice your opinion, and I'm certainly always open to hear that opinion. Again, doesn't necessarily mean I personally would agree with it or not agree with it, but I've attended many meetings of groups in this community and listened to what they had to say, and will continue to do so. But we are elected officials, and we have to look at the whole big picture of what's best for the whole community. And that's where I'm coming from, and I can tell you that. I look at what's best for the community. And whether I like it or not, sometimes something's better for the community than it is for me personally, and I'll go with what's better for the community rather than my own interests. And that's what we're sworn to do when we take this oath of office. But I guarantee you that we will do that. And again, we're not muzzling anybody. We, in fact, invite your voice, voices to be heard. I think it's great when people show up to meetings and talk about that. So that's all.
Thank you. Keith?
Yes. I'd just like to reiterate, again, this is just a definition that'll be in our code. If it does not prevent someone outside of this definition from still filing an appeal that would come before the Board of Adjustment. So as staff, we would not stop that application. We would still bring it to the Counsel.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Counsel Heisler?
Yeah, I would just... Including echoing what we've heard from the other Counsel members, I would just like to say that, you know, to Sterling's point, we have to represent all of the members within the community and within the Town of Pinetop Lakeside. And I think that it becomes a pretty dangerous place when, as was just said, the majority of community members disagree with. I think that's a pretty dangerous place to be from a community perspective. Now, I can tell you that I've talked to many community members, some in this room. We've emailed back and forth. We've talked. I've heard thoughts and opinions on different issues. And I've also talked to many members of the community that disagree with those viewpoints. So I just want to say that I do... I think every one of us takes this responsibility very seriously and is trying to represent the community as a whole. And just because a few people think of something a certain way, it's pretty dangerous ground to be on that that opinion represents the majority of the members of the community.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Is there any other member of the public that would like to address us? I'm sorry, you had your time. You had your five minutes. I would entertain a motion on this item, then.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 22-1646 and Ordinance Number 22-455, thereby amending Title 17.12.020 of the Town of Pinetop Lakeside Town Code and adding the definition of an aggrieved person.
Second?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. That carries unanimously. That concludes our business for tonight. But before we adjourn, I would just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Don't forget the tree lighting tomorrow and the other events that Tony talked about. We look forward to seeing everybody in the new year. Thank you. Counsel, don't go away. We have...